I want to call a January 3, 2023, regular meeting of the Eugene Water and Electric Board of Order. Agenda item this evening is the agenda check. Does anybody have any questions about the agenda this evening? The second agenda item is we both have talked down in Schlossberg. So, Mindy? I don't know where we go.
I come to you, you come to me, whatever works.
Well, let's just go to you.
All right, let's do it. Got John first. So please raise your right hand. I, John H. Brown, do solemnly swear.
I, John H. Brown, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
I will, to the best of my ability.
faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner for the city of Eugene.
faithfully perform the duties of the Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner for the city of Eugene.
During my continuance therein.
Continuance therein.
And thus I swear, so help me God.
And thus I swear, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Right hand, swear. I, Mindy Schlossberg, do solemnly swear.
I, Mindy Schlossberg, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my abilities.
Best of my abilities.
faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner for the city of Eugene.
faithfully perform the Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner for the city of Eugene.
During my continuance therein.
My continuance therein.
And thus I do affirm, under pains and penalty of perjury.
And I do affirm, under pain and penalty.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the agenda items, items for the board members and the general manager, I'll start with Commissioner Schlossberg.
Nothing for me, other than happy new year, everybody.
Rossky.
I met with the McKenzie Watershed Council, updated them on our direction that we were heading on the Leberg Canal, and it was received quite well. It wasn't pushed back. Most people in the room were happy to hear it from that advocacy group, so.
Richard Carlson.
So, as the liaison to the Elkhog Board, I wanted to report back that they are planning to have an annual dinner, sports again, some kind of event in March, basically first weekend in March. And typically those meetings are recognized, you know, outstanding civic participation, elected officials, public employees and such. So at some point, we'd love feedback from folks around on outstanding, outstanding work in the community. So I just wanted to put that out there to make sure you all knew that was, had that on your radar, and if you have some folks you have in mind, I'll let you know what categories are here soon, but that, put that out there, think about it.
Next, if I may, just to keep in order. One thing, I do have a question from Frank and staff is, it used to be that when there was a media story about E-Web or something, we would get a link to it and a lead on it. Like tonight on the news, it was a really good story that Aaron had about the IRP and our ability to serve the electric EV and the mandate that no more internal combustion engines by 2035 and everything. And if you didn't see it, you wouldn't know about it, and if you didn't watch that specific channel. And I was wondering why we have gone away from that? We don't do that anymore?
Yeah, we have not moved away from that. Some of these are before, some of them are after. We're made aware of the stories. We're going to get the link out to commissioners today.
Because I haven't seen a link in a long time for any media stories, so I'm just wondering if we went away from a policy, but if we could do that, I think it's really good that we all know that we're not different topics. So thank you. Thanks, Matt. Frank.
Just wanted to acknowledge some, some staff work. We had the opportunity for two specific mutual aid opportunities over the last couple of weeks. One of them was to help out the city of Mapleton Water District, where we said, sent equipment and people, including operators, to help them. And the other one was Portland General Electric, who because of the windstorm, at one point had up to 100,000 people out of power. And we had, we had recovered from this area, so we were able to send some, some crews to help PGE as well. So I really wanted to acknowledge both an electric opportunity and a water opportunity that we had over the last couple of weeks. Thanks staff for their response.
Next agenda item is going to be public input. And, and do we, we have anybody signed up in the audience to testify this evening?
I have not received any requests from folks in Oregon. We have four people on the line. The fifth individual has not called in yet.
Okay, so I've got five on my list, so, but four have, correct?
Yeah, the first four are on the line.
Josh Corn has not. Okay, all right, well then I'm going to public input, and I'm going to read the preamble. When your name is called, please come forward and clearly state your name and also your address. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present their testimony. Please keep track of time by watching the timer in front of the room or by looking for an audio notification with three minutes as a last. If you're participating by telephone, remember to unmute your call. Press star six if calling from a landline, or simply use the unmute button if calling from a cellphone. All testimony is heard. Each commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy we do not engage in a back and forth dialogue. Please note that the failure of a commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of nor opposition to any speaker's testimony. If it is presented by a speaker and the board does not provide an answer, E-Web staff member will contact the speaker so the question can be addressed at a later time. Person signed up is Adrian Fainman. Sorry for the pronunciation. Adrian?
Yes, hi. My name is Adrian Fainman. I am the CEO and designer for Cedarstone, where we design and build beautiful, energy-efficient... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yeah, we, we, just keep going, you're doing fine.
Okay. And we just build, design and build energy-efficient net negative carbon footprint homes and ADUs. We use cross-laminated timber, CLT, to simply and elegantly improve housing on every metric, including performance, aesthetics and constructability. We're based in Eugene, and we have an ADU design that's been pre-approved for permit by the city of Eugene, and it's on their website. We are designing homes that support and nurture family life by thoughtfully considering the home's layout, indoor air quality, eliminating mold, improving thermal comfort, long-term affordability with respect to utilities, maintenance and resilience to a changing climate. We have put our heart into our work so that we can offer these one-of-a-kind homes that are pieces of art because we understand the impact of housing. Family life is based in the home. We would love if E-Web were joining us in pioneering new ways of achieving energy efficiency, and we would love if E-Web could help make more tools, such as the Passive House Planning Package, the PHPP, easily available to Eugene designers, so that we can demonstrate the energy consumption of different building options and develop renewable energy plans to offset energy use. We are inspired by a net negative carbon future and an integrated approach to building design. We're committed to developing beautiful, multi-generational family homes that are innovative, healthy and resilient. You can take a look at our approach and our pre-approved design on our website, which is CedarstoneDB, as in design-build.com. And we have a selection of pre-designed plans, and we also do custom design, and we would love to collaborate, so please feel free to get in touch. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Nadine Scott.
Hi, I'm Nadine Scott. I'm a homeowner on Leberg Dam Road, a real estate broker for Windomere Real Estate, Lane County. I'm president of the McKenzie Chamber of Commerce and correspondent secretary for the McKenzie Leawatta Coalition. Tonight, I am voicing my own personal concern. Has the Leberg Dam Bridge ever been tested for asbestos? If so, when and by who? There was mention of rerouting Leberg Dam Road via the Good Passage Covered Bridge. Ingress, egress, for the Good Passage Bridge is very dangerous. It is a one-lane bridge, which cannot be widened. There is no room for traffic to pull over without being backed up on the highway. Many accidents have already occurred there. Lee Shore Drive and Leberg Dam Road are currently one-lane roads. Will they be widened? How many properties will you have to purchase in order to accomplish this? There are at least 24 property owners that currently use the Leberg Dam Bridge to access their property or their homes. There are also many homeowners on Lee Shore Drive that have their properties that would be affected, and it was also increased traffic hazard. Tourism is the primary of content in the McKenzie River Valley. Over 1,100 signatures signed on petition to save Leberg Lake were gathered from folks who actually used the lake in September. That came from many different states and from all over the country. These were submitted to E-Web, to the E-Web Board in time for their October meeting. If you take away tourism, businesses will be forced to close. The Holiday Farm Fire was devastating enough to these business owners. Many have already been forced to close. Property values will plummet. Homeowners purchase property on Leberg Lake because we want to live on the lake, which is usable water. The McKenzie River is not considered usable water unless you're an experienced person. Many deaths have occurred on the river from inexperienced folks. The normal family cannot afford to hire guides to take them down the river. Therefore, those tourists will not be coming back to visit the McKenzie River area if the lake goes away. There are hundreds of E-Web...
You're kind of wrapping up, Nadine, you're out of time, so.
I, last two sentences. There are hundreds of E-Web rate payers in the 20-mile, 27-mile stretch of the McKenzie River Valley, and yet we do not have a commissioner to rep us, represent us regarding what E-Web does. Why not? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Dusty Nguyen.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
My name's Dusty Nguyen. I am president and co-founder of Pure Light Power. Pure Light Power is a Medford-based solar installation company that is now in Montana, Iowa and the entire state of Oregon. Since 2019, we've installed 4,500 homes with solar, 2,500 being in Oregon, and that makes us the largest residential solar installer in all three states. The reason I'm on the call today is we've decided to open up Eugene as a servicing area for solar, and we were made aware of the change in policy that is requiring homeowners to get two bids in order to get solar installed on their home. One thing about Pure Light Power is we're a completely vertically-integrated solar company, which means start to finish. We handle the project, we own all of our own electrical licenses, we have all the licenses required to do the installs, and all of our salespeople are W-2 employees on salary. The reason that I'm speaking today is I'm assuming the policy was changed to get multiple bids because of these obnoxious door-to-door companies that are coming from out of state, sending 1099 door-to-door sales reps to customers' homes. What we've seen is Pure Light Power is the problem with these companies is their sales reps are on a 1099 model, and they do not work directly for the installation company. Their pay scale is, is called a redline pay scale, where they'll contract with the installer, and any price they sell above the redline, the sales rep gets to keep as a commission. Sales reps are being advertised to move to Oregon to go door-to-door to sell solar, being told that they can make over $1,000 per kilowatt by selling solar. That leads to the second problem. Because of these high commissions that sales reps are making going door-to-door above the redline, it is leading to sales reps overselling solar, selling too large a systems for customers, and ultimately price gouging customers. Problem number three with these companies is they're using subcontractors to do the installs. In the event of the sales rep being dishonest in the sale, once the customer realizes it, either they call the sales rep to find out he's no longer in the state, or they call the installation company, and the installation company simply says they had nothing to do with the sale, they simply completed the install. I do not blame E-Web for putting this policy in place to allow multiple, to require multiple bids to go solar. With that being said, it's clear that E-Web has put this policy in place because of these companies that have made their way in the state, but I don't think it's beneficial to the companies doing it right in the state of Oregon. By requiring customers to get multiple bids, a lot of times we could be sending customers to get bids from some of these outside-of-the-state companies, and I can tell you from firsthand experience that it is not the best bid that wins, but it sometimes is the best salesman. If we allow this policy to go in place, it is going to further create problems for E-Web. These door-to-door companies are very... Yep, my last thought is these companies are smart how they go about doing things, and it's only going to perpetuate these companies doing solar the wrong way. I request that E-Web considers other safeguards to put in place to protect customers from these issues, and I'll be spending further...
Thank you very much. I have to be fair to everybody.
Thank you.
We do have your...
Sorry about that. Yep.
We got your testimony, so we'll get your full message. So thank you very much for testifying this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
The next individual is William Smith.
William Smith, Ward 1. Last month, I talked about the fiber optic networks launched by the Electric Power Board of Chattanooga, Tennessee, and more recently by Hillsboro, Oregon, thereby fully committing themselves to reliable and affordable and secure and much faster broadband internet service for all homes and businesses and schools in their communities. The $2.69 billion return on investment in Chattanooga that I talked about shows that public utilities can successfully rethink their business model to include broadband fiber optic internet service that generates extraordinary economic and social benefits community-wide, not just for the wealthy few. Now, E-Web has provided reliable water and electric service for generations and has played a key role also in the establishment of downtown fiber optic network, which is a great start. But even in downtown, many people remain unaware that they can cut their internet bills in half with fiber optic broadband service that's more reliable and more secure and much faster than the telecoms are offering. When I was a trainee at IBM back in the 1980s, the long-term strategy of that company was based on a vision, a futuristic vision of information as a basic utility that anyone can plug into, kind of like electricity from a wall socket. Now, decades later, that basic vision has apparently been integrated into the core business model and operations of some public utilities like the Electric Power Board of Chattanooga, and the resulting services and benefits to their customers have been extraordinary. And for those of us who care about safety and health, this proven success is even more extraordinary because it gives families and businesses and schools the ability to opt out of wireless technologies that even insurance companies will not insure because they know the real science and data that shows harm from these technologies on humans and other living beings. And that even the FTC is now required to review, per federal court decision 20-1025, on behalf of the Children's Health Defense and the Environmental Health Trust. You can look it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Corn available? Okay, Josh Corn.
Yes, yes, thank you. Joshua Corn in South Eugene. And I, I want to echo the sentiment of, of William Smith. And I think there's, there, this community that we live in has a, a high concentration of health-minded individuals that believe in, in, in preserving our safety, and with all the research that has been coming out and the legal winds against the industry for some of which mentioned by, by William Smith, it's, this last mile, the concept of the last mile being dominated by the wireless industry has got to end. The era of the last mile being, being monopolized by wireless telecoms is, is over, and Eugene should be a model city for, for fiber optic technology and for giving people connectivity at low cost with high-speed internet without being dominated by dangerous wireless technologies that, that you guys are currently renting your poles to these wireless telecom WTF transmitters when they are not following the law and they are not, they are not filling a gap in coverage, which is required under the, under the law in order to add a new small cell. If there's no gap in coverage, there's no need for a new transmitter closer and closer to where people live and sleep, and that's, that needs to be a safe place. So thank you for hearing us, and, and please do the right thing, and, and let's support the fiber optic technology.
Thank you, Joshua. We have one additional person that came late out. If you'd like to approach it, do you know the protocol of three minutes?
Yes.
About two minutes and 45 seconds. Watch the timer, we won't engage in a back and forth. So this is Grace Braller. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you so much for accommodating me. Good evening, everybody. My name is Grace Braller. I'm the Wildlands Director for Cascadia Wildlands, we're Eugene-based conservation nonprofit, and we work to restore and defend Cascadia by our regions' wild ecosystems. I appreciate the opportunity to provide comment tonight. We've expressed to the board before our very strong support for decommissioning the hydroelectric facility on Leberg, the Leberg Hydroelectric Facility, excuse me, and removing the Leberg Dam for the multitude of environmental and climate benefits that will follow from that decision. So we just wanted to sincerely thank the board for deciding to move forward in that direction by agreeing with the general manager's recommendation at your last meeting. Removing the dam will offer numerous benefits for imperiled species and other wildlife lives that rely on the McKenzie River, a natural free-flowing river, will assist endangered species, act listed fish like trout, spring chenix salmon and their recovery, as well as support a healthy and resilient ecosystem for generations to come. The recommendation specifies that decommissioning the hydroproject, the dam should and will likely be required to be removed. And so we would request that the board ensure that the plan to decommission the project guarantees that the dam shall be removed and we're to restore the stretch of the river as quickly as is feasible. We're also very thrilled to hear numerous commissioners express interest in actively pursuing full restoration of the river, including by reconnecting tributaries to the main stem. So we are E-Web to commit to restoring the stretch of McKenzie in full as expeditiously, excuse me, as possible, and make a plan for incremental return to pre-project conditions. So again, due gratitude to the board and staff and all the effort that has gone into this decision. We know there's been a lot. Thank you for accommodating my comment. I think that's all I got for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Anybody else either? Okay, then I'll close input and ask for comments from commissioners. If you'd like to jump in and comments. And heard?
I'd just briefly say thanks to those who took the time to come in or, or call in today and, and provide testimony. We're certainly listening to all of it in reference.
Any other comments? And?
President Brown, just for the record, we did receive four written testimonies, which were provided to the board, and those were from Chris Daughters, Adrian Fainman, Jack Grisley and Justin Nguyen.
Thank you very much. Okay, only a couple other items to, then I'm done. So your next agenda item is approval, consent calendar A. I would entertain a motion to adopt him if somebody else wants something to moan.
Consent calendar A.
Second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And, passes unanimously. Calendar B. Want to move Mike Carlson? Say goodbye Schlossberg, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And, passes unanimously. Next agenda item is the last of all. So there's a, I've done this a few times. There's a ready to... We've done closed ballot, we've done all these other things, but I kind of like to move in and do it. And so if there's no objection, we could, one of the ways to do this is to move slightly. So in other words, I would, somebody made a motion, say, I oppose person A as president, person B as vice president, if it's seconded, and if there's no other combinations, we go on and it's done. Or we can do one person at a time. Is there a will of this group? Yeah, well, silence is, is a message. And so I'll, I'll just move from there. And I have a slate I would promote, and so I'm going to do it and just say I would promote that Sonya Carlson be board president and John Brofsky be vice president. Is there a second?
Second.
Senator Mike Schlossberg. Any other motions or positions? Nah, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, President, Vice President. You're the gavel. And you can have the title. And if we don't have cookies next meeting, we're in trouble.
Thank you, thank you for...
It's wrapped it.
I already broke it. I already broken it. All right. Thank you for all your service. Yes, you're running the meetings, so you're getting it out expeditiously every you make a bill. I've told you to fill out. Big shoes to fill, not big shoes to fill. Okay. Well, I guess we'll ride along then. Appointment of board liaison assignments. We have a long list of board liaison assignments, and you can do kind of similar process. So if anybody wants a particular item or particular process, I'll, I'll ask. If I hear silence, I'll propose something myself. Okay. Why don't we go down the list and just kind of do it one by one? And currently, we have certain people in positions, and if there is anyone who desires to remain in the position, maybe that's a good way to start.
Well, I am on McKenzie Watershed Council right now, and if there's no objection, I would, yeah.
And I have been on the Elkhog Board. If you'd like to stay on that one, as I'm currently serving as vice president.
I've been on OPEB quarterly. I don't have a vote. I'm just, I just listen and I have something to reveal, and I've reported, and I'm willing to continue to try and do that.
That's the last one.
You have sub. I have sub, and I'm happy to stay there.
I have Lane Electric, but I, I'm happy to stand there. I've done a good job of liaison.
You know, Mindy, if you want, I'm a Lane Electric customer, and I'd be more than bad to sit in their meetings or like to s... or like the second Wednesday of the month, I think. And I go to a board meeting or my business partner's husband's on the board. So, I can probably get an insight on what's going on. But I have a pretty good rapport with all the board members. So, if you want, I could certainly take that.
Central there? Yeah?
President Carlson, I would also note that the City of Eugene Liaison was listed as as John Brown and yourself is typically the president and the vice president. So, that would naturally change by the administrative change.
And we also have a potential new liaison assignment for the City of Springfield that was listed in here. If that's something that we can. Which is interesting because I thought, so there's the Springfield Utility Board, which that has been. There's the City of Springfield, which is the potential. I'd be happy to take that one.
Yeah, because I think with the second treatment plant, there's going to be some interactions going on there that might be helpful to.
If you want backup, I'll be your backup. Because I've got a pretty good rapport with the people there. I recall was there for McKenzie Watershed Council's Governing Board, there was a staff member that wanted to do that, that would take over Carl's place. I think that would be good.
Yeah, I think if that's the recommendation, we can certainly accommodate that.
And that would be probably.
So. Oh, he's retiring in March. Is that correct? And so, we would.
Susan, maybe? Yeah.
Potentially.
She's been a worthless staff on that. Susan's been attending it with me, so I think that that would be a good one.
So, do we need to appoint a person now or can we keep?
We can keep Carl and then I can bring back a recommendation for his replacement with an alternate, different staff person.
And then that, so there's a, there's a, there's two. There's the McKenzie Watershed Council and then there's the board that oversees the 501(c).
And that's, is that different than the McKenzie Watershed Alliance Executive Board?
That's, that's what, that's the one with Carl's on right now. Yeah. And it was said.
Well, it sounds like we have a potential plan. I think what I'll do for the record is list it all out and then entertain a motion to support that. That works for everyone.
Can I just ask one question, which is about the liaisons to City of Eugene? I don't have strong feelings about it, but I know the previous slate was Mindy and myself. And you were president at the time, but I was not vice president at the time. I certainly don't object to it being the president and vice president, but I also don't want to pile a whole bunch on to the vice president and president if that's not the expectation. Anyway, it might give us more options if we have that open to any commissioner. But again, like I don't have strong feelings. I'm not asking to make positions. I just want to know that in here.
I feel like we changed it last year. We decided that it would just be smoother to have the leadership and then we have like the continuity of somebody. And then we also kind of tightened it up a little bit by, I think next month, we talk about what our priorities are. So, as a board, we're in some direction.
It makes that, yeah, okay. Thanks for reminding me.
I guess if, you know, keep with somewhat of a flow that the vice president might go into the president's, then it does keep some of that continuity over that time. So, you kind of know what we talked about. That's the benefit I'd see of it, but I'm also.
Reminder for Mindy.
And I've got a pretty good relationship with the leadership of the city. I have one-on-one meetings with Sarah and some other people through other boards that I'm on, so.
No other objections, then I will move forward with, I'm stating it and then we'll see if that works for everyone. So, Lane Council of Governments, Mr. Carlson and John Borowski were listed as an alternate. We did not discuss that.
I remember had, have had to go. And I can give that up if somebody else wants it. I mean, you've done a wonderful job on that.
All right, well, welcome. Not hearing any objections, but welcome. That is, and then I have McKenzie Watershed Council, John Borowski. Have McKenzie Watershed Alliance Executive Board, Paul Lordy's firm, while we find a staff replacement. I have the OPEC, John Brown, Springfield Utility Board, Crane, Lane Electric Cooperative, John Brown, City of Eugene, myself and John Borowski, City of Springfield, Andy Schlossberg. Addus it. If that works, then I'll entertain a motion.
Do the last slate? Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next up. Goal number three, Lieberg Hydroelectric Project.
President Carlson, that's sort of deja vu. Go back far enough. Congratulations, commissioners. Good evening. Welcome to 2023. This is a follow-up item from our meeting last month, where we discussed a lot of the basis for the management recommendation on the future disposition of Lieberg. Joining me is Karen Kelly, our Chief Operating Officer, and Lisa Krantz, our Generation Manager, as well as members of the Evaluation Team, who put in a tremendous amount of work over the last several years to look at different alternatives and engage in a significant amount of public outreach and analysis on providing options and exploring what the future might hold for the Lieberg Hydroelectric Project. Just a quick reminder of the timeframe and the journey that we've been on and kind of where we are. It culminated really about eighteen months of a pretty heavy investigation and analysis with a recommendation and a support package of a significant amount of data from customer surveys to feedback in other forms, qualitative and quantitative, as well as economic analysis in the six hundred and forty-nine-page backgrounder last month, as well as the summary of the management recommendation on the future disposition. And so, that was where a bulk of the, sort of the pinnacle of work came together with that recommendation that we deliberated and discussed with you last month. This month, as a follow-up to that, we are capturing, for the record, incorporating in the feedback that we received last month in really two items. One would be a Record of Decision and the other one is a Board Resolution. And those have slightly different purposes. A Record of Decision is typically a management tool, a mechanism for providing guidance, not only with the present administration and staff and management, but also for future members of the team to understand the basis for the decision, the impacts from the decision. And so, we use a Record of Decision for that purpose. And in this case, our Record of Decision is really simply to move to the next step, which is to develop a Lieberg Hydroelectric Project Decommissioning Action Plan. In some cases, we just call it a Lieberg Decommissioning Action Plan. And that is based on the document and the details that you received last month in the management recommendation. And then there's a couple other items that I'll touch on as well. So, Record of Decision being management's way of capturing the basis and the future direction. A Board Resolution is the parallel mechanism that the board can use to direct the general manager and thus the organization to develop a Lieberg Decommissioning Action Plan. So, they're parallel processes, but in essence, one is for the board and the other one is for management. And they're both communications tools. One thing I will note, and this is based on feedback that you all provided last month, is that we do feel because of the timelines here, it's really important to capture in the action plan the details on which future boards can provide oversight, milestones, opportunities to provide guidance and potentially redirection if necessary. And so, that will be specifically asked for in the Decommissioning Action Plan. That will be developed in 2023. We are in 2023. Just a quick recap of the recommendation for the record. It was to permanently discontinue electricity generation at Lieberg, is economically unviable to be able to continue to generate at that site, given its costs and overhead and risks and ongoing obligations. That likely, and in fact, does drive, will likely drive the removal of the dam and the development of alternative access across the river. And we will use where possible and where practical the issue of looking at the canal and wood portions and at what pace we preserve that to go to a full decommissioning. That's going to be one that as we get into the further analysis, there may be opportunities to use the canal. Maybe in some cases, more practical to actually return some of those tributaries directly to the river. And that'll be part of the future discussion, decisions and analysis. There's also some other opportunities to mitigate and will continue to mitigate water rights, specifically for hatcheries. And then there were two pieces left. One was to do and to commit to do a similar analysis for Walterville. Prior to 2030, we picked 2030 because the license runs out in 2040. And we can continue to operate at Walterville. In its present state, it's not in the same condition or the same, it's a much different type of situation at Walterville than it is at Lieberg. And then this last item was added based on the board discussion last month to identify opportunities and requirements for the board review guidance direction going forward for, I'll say, a number of boards, not just this one, but for future boards who may come in in 2032 and ask, you know, what was, what were you people thinking? And so, it'll be opportunities for future boards to provide guidance as well. This is, just to note, the Record of Decision and the Resolution does not mean the wrecking balls come out next week. This is going to be a long process, a very regulatory-driven process as well. And so, there is going to be a number of years. And when you look at this, construction actually beginning in the early to mid 2030s. And so, there's a lot of runway here, a lot of planning and a lot of administration that goes into this, a lot of outreach, a lot of work with settlement parties and other stakeholders. So, that will all be highlighted. It'll be described in the Lieberg Decommissioning Action Plan, of which we're asking for the Resolution to drive and for the Record of Decision to drive. What we would look for this evening from the board is for you to move to approve Resolution 2302, which as presented initiates the development of the Lieberg Hydroelectric Decommissioning Action Plan to be completed in 2023 with the progress tracked quarterly as a 2023 organizational goal. We decided that it would be the best mechanism to add that. We did not have that listed in our 2023 organizational goals last month, but felt it was important to show the continuance of this process and provide, at a minimum, quarterly updates to the board on where that Decommissioning Action Plan is and eventually complete that for you in 2023. And so, our ask this evening is for you to move and approve Resolution 2302. President Carlson, back to you.
Thank you. Any discussions, thoughts, comments, questions?
Question. So, this is not a done deal. I mean, we approved the Record of Decision and we move forward and we get more detailed information. What if that detailed information says, don't do this? Then what? Because we can't just walk away from it. And if we go back and it is, it's just not physically possible to do this, then what?
So, I think part of the detail that comes out in the action plan is the various milestones along the way. One of the things that, about a Record of Decision is, or the Resolution in this case, and the management recommendation last month, was we believe it's conditioned based on what we know today. If for some reason, there's a new piece of information that we discover in the process, we have to have the humility to be able to take a step back and look at that in a new light. Now, this is, this is also, we don't want to portray this that we're going to be wishy-washy. We do believe that we've put together good estimates and good forecasts. And we don't want to be changing with every general manager or board. But we also recognize that we have to be able to provide opportunities for management and the board to review where we are. Does it still make sense to continue down the path for a month?
Hey, I got one more question. I call it the Warm Springs Bill. If that doesn't pass and we lose our water right, then we're done. Is that correct? Then decommissioning is mandated.
The the Warm Springs rule that you're referring to about the water rights does start a shot clock. That shot, there's no way that that will not expire within the time that we would start generation. We would have to apply for a new water right if we wanted to actually generate there again. That would be the process that we would have to go through.
That's, that's it. If you want a right, I'm sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
One thing I would add to that is that, as you know, we're working closely with other utilities and other interested stakeholders. We feel very hopeful that we will have a positive outcome on that. Should that not have the outcome we're looking for, then we would continue to pursue other outcomes as feasible.
Thank you.
John Borowski.
So, we're approving you to move forward with an action plan. Once you develop that action plan, are we going to have input on that again?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so when, so you develop an action plan over the next year, we look at that, part of that will be, I'm sure, public outreach would be part of that action plan, settlement parties, all of those types of things. And we, at what point will we look at that action plan and approve it? I mean, is that the next step of this? Do you develop it and then you'll come back and we'll approve it? Amend it or just walk me through that a little bit?
Yeah, I do believe it's the next step to develop the action plan. There'll be a number of checking on the action plan. This isn't, we will go away and all of a sudden you'll see something December of next year. This will be an opportunity to have some engagement with the board as we're working through this. So, it won't just, so that you'll be familiar with what's going into that. I would say it's the best for the organization if the board at some point does, does at least endorse it in some way. I don't know whether that's through an action or some kind of Record of Decision process. But I do believe that formally, the board for management and staff's purposes should take that next step and endorse that.
So, and that's good. I like that. I mean, I think that for me, having the action plan and being able to look at. I mean, I think that for me, having an, having the action plan and being able to look at it is going to help the public understand what we're doing because we're getting these questions. You know, we got a question tonight, you know, it's a one lane bridge. What are you going to do about that? It's, you know, it's, we've had other ones that are worried, you know, about what, what is going to happen up there? And hopefully, a lot of those will be spelled out. Obviously, a lot of them can't be until we, until we hear from FERC and some of the other interested parties. But as much information as we can get out to the public, when we know or have a better idea, I think it's an important thing that I would like to see as as a commissioner.
I'd like to make just a quick distinction between an action plan and what will ultimately ultimately be the decommissioning plan. An action plan and what we're able to take on this year are is setting out through the milestones and the process as best we know them at this point in time. Specific details of actions that will take place for decommissioning, we're a ways out from that because that again is a negotiated agreement with settlement parties and others. But what we want to do this year is lay out all the steps that we know we need to go through, including public outreach, how we engage with the settlement parties, how we engage with with FERC and others, so that you have a sense that we were dotting all of our i's and crossing our t's eventually. I do envision that it will be, we might have some surprises along the way. So it might be a little bit of a living document, you know, similar to a master plan that changes over time if you get new information or maybe a permitting process or other process takes longer than you expected it to.
Good.
Commissioner Spohm.
I have a question. When, how long do you think it will take to develop that action?
We plan to take this year because we have a number of things we want to do to make sure that we're, we've made as educated of an action plan as we can, including having a coordination meeting with the three separate divisions of FERC, starting to do some initial outreach outreach to stakeholders, that sort of thing. So we've given ourselves a deadline at the end of this year. And that doesn't mean that there won't be specific actions that will take place this year because there will be some things that we will do this year as we're developing the action plan, including continued public outreach, again, some discussion with stakeholders and with the FERC. And, you know, a number of other things that I think we had spelled out in our draft goals, some specific actions that will take place. Meanwhile, we'll continue to focus a lot of our efforts this year on our near term risk reduction measures. And that's one of the things we really want to make sure we turn our sights to so that we can get that work completed as quickly as possible.
Great, thanks. And then at what point do we have a decommissioning plan? Like, is that after 2027 when the studies have been done? Or like, where does that, when does that come in?
Well, that's the best guess at this point because the decommissioning plan, the actual plan, what are we going to do with the dam, with the road? What does restoration look like? That comes out of, again, a negotiated process. So presumably, we would do something similar as we did recently with our Carmen Smith license, where we would develop a settlement agreement with the various parties. That takes a number of years. That would have details in it of specifics of what we're going to do. Then that would go to FERC for their formal approval. So we would have a very detailed proposal in that timeframe. And then there's a FERC approval process after that that would codify what we said we wanted to do.
I guess my one request is that we use some of our scheduled work sessions to devote to this topic just because, I mean, I I think it's one of the biggest decisions that we've made since I've been on this board and really big and technical. And so personally, I get a lot out of the work sessions when we can just focus on this topic. And because it's such a big one, I would just request that we look at scheduling a big ones. Several of our work sessions. And then I guess my last thing is that, does the staff expand? Like, do we hire a lot more staff for a project this size? Or is it basically the team that's been, yeah, how does that work?
We do expect we're going to need some help. We have a lot going on in generation. The Lieberg project is not the only thing. And so, yes, we're currently looking at that right now, what our staffing or other resource plan might look like. It's not necessarily just staffing. There's also, you know, ways we can use consultants or contractors or that sort of thing. So, yeah, we'll start now that we, well, assuming that the board approves a resolution this evening, we have a direction going forward, then we'll really be able to to make a plan for that resource list.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll just take one moment. And many people have been following conversation as a board and and staff. And I just want to say that this is not an easy decision, that this is just an extremely complex project with dozens of moving parts. And the options that we've been considering have wildly different impacts on the utility, on residents, on residents of River, ratepayers in the river. And for those who are just weighing, just listening in tonight, I guess I want to emphasize that we've been discussing this project for over a year, learning and debating and listening as we go. And I don't take this decision lightly, and I don't think any of my fellow warden tenders do either. I think the decision to move toward decommissioning is the right one. And there are many reasons for this. But for me, the primary reason stems from the immense unknowns and economic risks that utility faces if we move to repair the project and resume operation. And lastly, I want to say thanks to staff team, the incredible work of this project team that done a great job, in my opinion, coming up with extremely complex, long term, difficult decision for the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your turn.
I've got a second round once you're done.
Okay, all right. I I just want to echo, add on to what Commissioner McCray said. And I think we've had over 20 sessions on this over the last few years. And it is, it's just, it it has so much impact. However, it does seem like because there's such a long runway to it that I appreciate the thoughtfulness. I know that if staff come up with something that seems like we need to pivot because we have no information, that we'll have the opportunity to be involved in that process. This isn't the end of of our involvement. So thank you so much again for all the hard, hard work. It has immense impact on citizens, no matter where you live in our territory, because it impacts rates, it impacts livelihoods, and it's not something to take lightly. So thank you again. All right.
Have you done any comparisons with our proposed timeline and and Gold Ray and the and the river dams that they tore up? How long it took from beginning to end, what the what the hurdles were and things such as that? Because they they've taken two dams out in the last decade. And we also have the Clamens River that's that's in process. But about, since the Rogue has have actually been from beginning to end, and they've taken them out, have we learned anything from that? Do we have a lesson there? Do we have a timeline there? How close from their predictions to the reality was it? We used a case study or?
I I can't speak specifically to the Gold Ray project. What I can say that is that I hope we can meet this timeline, but all of the decommissionings that have occurred to date that I'm aware of have taken longer than the initial estimates. And, you know, it is, it is a long and complicated process. And so this is, this is a hopeful timeline.
Thank you.
Another question. In this action plan, will there be a monetary part of it too? Will there be a rate structuring in the action plan so that we can look and say, okay, here's when we're having to start raising rates? Or this, this will be the impact? Is that something that would be part of this action plan or not? Is that a separate tract?
I would think that's a separate tract, Commissioner. And I know that our chief financial officer and myself and our, some of our customer officer did plan on meeting with the board this year to talk about different financial options going forward. That's, that's a separate tract from the the action plan associated with decommissioning.
And now that I guess the question I would have is, in many of the financial things that that we've been put forward, it was always Lieberg's not included, Lieberg's not included. Once we do this resolution, Lieberg going to be included in our multi year financial plans and those types of things. Because up until this point, we've been looking at all these things. And there was always the asterisk, Lieberg not included. If we give a resolution tonight, I would hope that in the upcoming multi year financial plans, an asterisk goes away.
We will be removing the asterisk.
And I don't know if I really look forward to that. But I just want to be able to have the reality of what the, what it means going forward to our ratepayers and to our organization as a whole.
And a number of the financial considerations, including how it's treated by our auditors, those discussions are and because of how you classify your assets and how you do your reporting of that. So the asterisk will be removed. The the Lieberg decision will be incorporated in our long term plans. And then we will have to have a discussion with the board around pros and cons of the different financial options to cover it.
And do you think that, I mean, and I'm spitballing, would this have something, an impact on our bond rating? The the amount of that we're going to be indebted to to do this?
Our, our, our amount of debt is a consideration for sure. But we have not been given indication that this will cause alarm. Financial advisors, you will like, you will see some disclosure in the audit this year on our intended actions with respect to Lieberg.
It's generally considered an exception. It's not something that we do routinely. But I'm sure that it's appropriate for an auditor to identify that it's a long term financial obligation. And so I I think there's going to be a mix of, you know, the exception piece of it relative to a division. And it's not an an operating issue, for example. But it will, it will have some importance in how it's classified and how we're obligated to to finance it. So
So it might be clear to say, we don't expect it to impact our bond covenants at all because we anticipate that it will be treated as an extraordinary item. So in that respect, it will be excluded from our ratio calculations.
That's good. I hate to have Moody's come in here and downgrade us, which would cost us a lot more other projects.
Thank you.
Randy?
Does it cross? Just one final thing to add. I I know that I know a couple commissioners have mentioned the multi year process, lots of outreach and engagement. And we, we really appreciate the commissioners and their participation in this over the last several years. We also, I think it's important to recognize that not everybody agrees with all the aspects of this. And in fact, some people have said that that we, you know, predetermined this. But that's not true. I think, you know, in working with all of you, understanding that that different commissioners have had different perspectives on this over time is a good indication, from my perspective, that you're you're weighing the information as you're going through it. And that we didn't enter this with a preconceived output or outcome that we were looking for. And so I I do feel like the process was a pure one. We landed on a recommendation. Hopefully, you will endorse that here in in a minute or so. But it wasn't preconceived. And it was, I think, a really good process and a lot of work included by the commissioners. So thank you.
Great. And I just wanted to add that when we make this decision and we're doing some of that outreach, I hope that we can have some other information prior to having neighborhood meetings and such that follow them, messages. We've all sat through 20 plus, but it's always good to have run through that sort. So I'd throw that up. Okay, well, we have a potential decision here.
You want us to do the record and the resolution as separate motions? Or just?
It was in one motion if you would like.
So as Vice President, I move to move forward the record of decision on the Lieberg hydroelectric project and Resolution Number 20, excuse me, 2302, that directs the general manager to develop for the board the Lieberg hydroelectric decommissioning action plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, as unanimously, that's a miracle. Thank you. That that, I think, speaks volumes to the process right there. Okay. Next up, proposed 2023 strategic goals and organizational performance measure.
Don't mean to hang out here. Under this, take a look. Yeah, thank you. Good evening, commissioners, staff and everybody in virtual land. For the record, my name's Rod Price. I'm going to talk about organizational goals this afternoon or this evening, excuse me. As Frank noted, his name's on this too, as well as mine. But I'd really like to extend a thanks to the executive team and the managers for collaborating on this process. This was not just a so along with that, so really the purpose of this discussion anyways, to get the proposal of the proposed goals as they were stated in the background. This is just a reminder that there's some policy out there and tucked away at the end there that the board improves annual budgets. So it's just part of the process that we use to operate and to stay on track. Again, a familiar looking slide from our our previous discussion in December. This was a, we continue on the process here of of drafting and and making goals for the year. And this is then again followed up by our quarterly reports and metrics and to see how well we're following them. So right now, we're presuming we we get approved goals tonight or in the January phase. But during our discussion last month, as part of the session, the proposed goals discussion and priorities, came away with the three themes that came back from the board. One of those themes was around making sure that we incorporate our community, the DEI discussion, as well as focusing on our workforce, but there are community pieces involved as well. There's also another question around resiliency and how does that fit into what follows here? Does it? And then some other discussions around having, making sure we're checking off the goals and then moving them along, not just carrying goals forward. And so with those kind of things in mind, if you recall, I said words matter. So we sat down and recrafted a handful of goals to to reflect those, that feedback. So some of those updates include in operational effectiveness. Find the language a little bit to include some improvements to our quarterly reporting process. Again, that's that feedback loop, KPIs, you know, we've heard discussion from the board. I've said multiple times about KPIs and simplifying or getting the right stuff. So there's going to be some increased focus on reporting process. The other thing is we wanted to do is include a little background. Why are we asking for a data of any? So this gives a little more, language gives it a more focus around that. Excuse me. The workforce cultural goal, a couple of things that we refined some language around was the employee survey and and what the purpose of that is, a little bit more about how we're going to use that. Why we're doing it. And then the other thing was to add some reflection of the DEI resiliency language. And the way we phrased it was to develop DEI and resiliency policies to support our work. And so that last word there is meant to tie everything together to our community because our work involves our community, it involves our staff. involves our community, it involves our staff, and it involves our customers and all of them. So it was meant in a sort of Catholic sense, I guess you'd say. No changes to Goal Three. Goal Four was simply find and structure a little bit to reflect that's really a two-part goal. It's this IRPs and process now, I'm going back to the public, going through iterations and different updates to bring back to the board. Do an endorsement. Once that's done though, we can start using that IRP model to project a PPA contract changes to see how we might fit. Goal Five, no changes. And then finally, we talked about last time a little bit, I think, that we were trying to reduce the number of goals. Last year we had eight goals and so the target was to reduce a little bit to help help move things off the list. There's all kinds of reasons to help that focus, but we did add a sixth goal to what we was added last time. I don't think I need to say a lot about why, since we just spent half an hour, 45 minutes talking about it, but one of the things I wanted to point out about this goal was the, there's two things kind of going on. We're doing this plan, this multi-year big thing, but there's also an immediate actions that may need to take place just from further requirements. Needing further requirements that's outside, whatever we do with the commitment. So the last sentence there is an attempt to identify that work needs to kind of move in parallel. So did add the language in these slides here if anybody wants to refer back to that, but.
All right. We'll open it up for discussion. Anybody want to jump into the queue? I am, I'll jump in and then I'll so the resiliency into our work piece on number two. It's interesting because when, when you pull it up here again, it did make me think each one of these items needs resiliency. So how do you incorporate that in so that we're thinking about, you know, we have a resilient system? Do we have a resilient electrification of our system? Do we have a resilient water treatment plan? Resiliency covers all of these. So it's interesting that you put it in the workforce and culture piece because it is really a mindset around how we develop each of our projects, programs, the system implementation. So I actually really like it being there, although I do wonder, to Commissioner McCray's point about bringing it up, is there a place for a policy of sorts? So I'm still open to that, but I do like having it there as kind of the top of the forefront. I also like having the Lieberg Decommissioning Action Plan in there because it's just, it's so much of the work that this team will be focusing on this year. I know it feels like it's been so much, but this is really just the start of a much bigger project. So I appreciate the addition and otherwise I think this is very helpful from my perspective.
Commissioner Carlson, I, I believe that we should do our resiliency policy. I've been giving that some thought and I was a little, wasn't sure I was warming up to the idea from, from Commissioner McCray right away. But, but I do see that it permeates across all the areas of how we operate, how we staff, how we plan. And I do think that it would be worthwhile for us to have some discussions around a resiliency policy. And I'm, I'm going to say that management will bring back some ideas to further fuel some, some discussions. So I think that's important. So that I think that's, that's a good idea. McCray was just a little bit ahead of me on that one, which is pretty typical. The other thing I would point out about some of the aspects of the goals is some of these, just by their outcome, further our resiliency. So when you think about the dynamic workforce model, that, that part of the, the purpose for that is to develop a more resilient workforce model, a working model. So many of the outcome that the EES system is designed for that and how we staff that. So many of the goals that you see are in support of the strategy, which has kind of two or three really big things, resiliency being one of those. The second treatment plan is all about resiliency. So I do think that it's a great idea to, to pursue the resiliency policy. But I'll also say you don't necessarily see the word resiliency in here a lot because the outcomes of those are, what's driving it is, is resiliency.
I would also love to have kind of a definition, a shared definition of what resiliency means. It may not mean the same to everybody. And so if we all have a common language around it and goals and outcomes, then that same
Yeah, I would just say, appreciate the opportunity to discuss the organizational goals at our last meeting. Last time. So just the process, unfortunately not. So thank you.
I don't know where this would go, but I know that over the years, we've spent a lot of money on source protection of the McKenzie or Pure Water Partnership and, and a lot of the work that we've done up there. And I'm just wondering when and where will we start doing some of that work on the Willamette if we're, if we're going to start pulling water out of the Willamette as our second source? I mean, is that something that to start getting into one of our goals, maybe not this year, but I mean, where and when? And then can we take lessons learned from, that we've learned over the last hundred years of the McKenzie and start implementing them on the Willamette? Because I think that that's going to be something that's as important, I mean, if it's a second source and we're only doing source protection of one of our sources. And I don't know where and when that discussion might happen. But is that a goal that we might want to start thinking about?
I, I do mean weigh in on that. It is something we've been thinking about, planning for, taking it and extrapolating what we've learned and what we've done on the McKenzie into the, into the Willamette. The, the timing of it is something that I'll, I'll probably lean into, to Karen and, and the management team on. I don't think it's a 2023 goal, whether it's 2024 or 2025, or at some point when we get into the actual construction of, of the plant. We also don't ignore the Willamette now. There's a number of things that we do on, on, on both rivers. But I think it's, there's, there's going to be a need to intentionally extrapolate from the McKenzie to the Willamette.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to mention that and give it, get it on the, on the radar.
Karen would like to weigh in.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, that with Goal Number One, you know, our operational effectiveness, our source protection is embedded in that already. So it's, I foresee it being a part of that once we really get moving on that second source. Like Frank said, there's work already happening now. Those partnerships are already built. Do more with it. Susan would tell you the same. But it will really be part of normal business because it's part of our regular source-to-tap model. It's an important piece to that. So I foresee it being embedded in Goal One.
Yeah, just like a reinforcement, John B. Tubus said, because to me that Willamette watershed is a whole different thing. We have oil trains, we have urban runoff, we have dairies. We've got a whole litany of things that are way beyond what we do up the McKenzie. We have, you know, the spill protection trailers up the McKenzie, but we've got oil trains with 100 cars of, of oil crude coming right down that river. Dairies and sewage treatment plants. And so to me, it's, if, if we're spending so much on the McKenzie, Willamette is to protect that watershed or address the issues, the threats to that watershed are going to be many times greater than they are the McKenzie, at least in my opinion, just knowing what the risks or the threats are to that watershed. So I just would like to emphasize that.
It will take a, adjusting our strategic plan for source protection. For sure. As well as, you know, looking at our actual source water protection plan aside from the strategic plan. So yeah, there is more work to be done.
Just thank you for incorporating the suggestions that we had last meeting.
Okay. Any direct second round, otherwise. The 2023 organizational goals. All those in favor, say aye. All right. Pass unanimously. Thank you very much. We are now at time here at 6:51. We have a scheduled break. And following that, we have the climate guidebook and correspondence and agendas. So do you want to take the break or would we like to keep? I'm saying it's not for a break. Okay, let's take a break.
Pretty good at seven, maybe.
At seven.
Thank you.
Like my first step is to throw together.
Drop, it's like dropping the mic. Getting it turned.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Are you all ready? All right. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. And welcome to those of you joining us from home and those of you who will be watching and reporting in the future. My name is Kelly Hale, and I am very honored to serve as EWEB's first climate policy analyst and advisor. I'm here tonight to tell you about an exciting new resource for the utility that we are calling EWEB's Climate Guidebook. I'm hoping today will be an opportunity to provide some information for you all on what to expect from the guidebook, and I seek your direction and feedback on the direction that we're headed. I plan to cover the goals, the outline, and the timeline for the guidebook and talk a little bit about the proposed content for the first release, as well as then hearing your feedback on some specific questions at the end of today's presentation. So what is the intent behind a climate guidebook? Well, the intent here is that this is going to be a reference document to do two things. Not only will it articulate how EWEB is addressing climate change, but it will also talk about where our work intersects with climate-related issues. And although there's a physical book here on the photo on this slide, the intent is that it will be an electronic PDF. But the intent of this picture is to hearken back to the days when you might go to the bookshelf and pull off an encyclopedia and look up a particular section that might relate to something that you were interested in finding out more about. So the intent with this guidebook is not for it to be a document that somebody might sit down and read from cover to cover, but it is intended to be a reference document that will have different content aimed at different audiences that can cover a variety of different topics to address how the utility is really thinking about and relating to climate change. So it will be based on, the structure of the document will be based on SD-15, EWEB's Climate Change Policy. And so let's just review what's included in SD-15. Many of you remember the five sections that are included. But this was passed originally in 2007 and updated in both 2018 and last year. But it has five main sections where the board has directed the general manager to take action. The first is related to climate policy, to work at the local, state, and regional levels to enact measures to minimize or mitigate greenhouse gas emissions. The second area of focus is on our power supply and transmission. And there's a specific goal within the policy that says that EWEB will support a low-carbon electric power portfolio that, on a planning basis, seeks to be resourced with 95% carbon-free power. The third area of focus is on customer decarbonization, and it says that we will assist our customers in meeting their greenhouse gas reduction goals. And the fourth area is related to the topic we were just discussing earlier, resiliency, and how we minimize impacts to key EWEB resources like water in the rivers, as well as our infrastructure and making sure it's resilient as well. And the last area also has a very specific goal as articulated in SD-15. This is related to our internal operations. It says we will reduce our internal emissions by certain percentages, by certain target dates. We successfully did meet the threshold of a 25% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2020. And we have two more ambitious goals on the table, to reach a 50% reduction by 2030 and to obtain carbon neutrality by mid-century. So when we think about this climate guidebook, again, it's this reference document or this concept of an encyclopedia to articulate how EWEB is addressing climate change or how our work intersects with climate-related issues. It's intended to be a place of strategy coordination, transparency, stakeholder engagement. And I kind of think about it as a one-stop shop. We have a lot of information embedded into a lot of other resources, whether it be throughout our website or in other reports or documents. And sometimes it can be hard to understand the entire universe of all the things that EWEB is working on or relating to. And so by referencing all these different concepts in the same document, then people can kind of see the full universe of the actions that we're taking. As I mentioned before, there is a variety of different types of audiences that this is really aimed at, because each section could have a different focus. And therefore, it might have a different target audience. So this is aimed at both internal stakeholders as well as external community members. And because it's not intended for that cover-to-cover reading, each section might have a different audience. So for example, we're planning to include things like studies or reference documents, information about current events, tables of data. Certain parts might be targeted, you know, primarily at, for example, City of Eugene staff as we seek to outline what our commitments have been included in the City of Eugene CAP 2.0, the Climate Action Plan, right? So it could be, you know, related to, you know, a particular audience of City of Eugene staff, but also any community member who's interested in what EWEB has committed to participating in related to that cap process. Another potential audience might be you all, trying to understand or articulate to any of our constituents exactly what our policy is and why it was structured in that way. So I'm hoping that there is something for everyone in this document. And I'll be asking for feedback on what you think would be most helpful at the end of today's presentation. So again, a way to articulate strategy, tactics, and prioritization, a variety of audiences. And as it relates to timeline, today I'm here before you to introduce the concept of the guidebook. Throughout the next couple of months, I plan to do some stakeholder engagement. This are primarily small group meetings to reach out to both our activist community, our key regional partners, and other groups in the community to introduce myself in my current role and share the concept, like I'm doing tonight, of what this guidebook is intended to do and hear feedback as to what the highest priority content areas will be to develop first. I plan to bring that feedback back to you when I come back in March. I have an agenda item there to release the first version. And we'll talk about that. That will be somewhat skeletal, but there's certain content that is already in the works and being developed. And then additional content will be developed over the next year. This is intended to be a living document, so it will be growing and shaping and changing over time. But the idea is that annual updates will come probably in April in advance of Earth Day. So what can you expect when I come back in March? What are the first six areas of content that we have planned for development for its first release? First, we'll start with a letter from our general manager Lawson explaining the concept and the purpose of the guidebook. We'll go through an executive summary that will provide a climate lens for those organizational goals that Assistant General Manager Price was just talking about a moment ago to highlight what, you know, what are those projects that we're engaged in in 2023 and make the connections between a number of those areas of focus and how that relates to climate change. We'll start in Chapter 1. And again, I mentioned before that the structure of the guidebook will be to have a chapter for each of those five areas of SD-15. So we'll have some content developed in Chapter 1 focused on climate policy. We'll be providing an overview of the policy status at the various levels. And that will be important as we look at what funding sources are coming from the new federal funding packages, the IIJA and the Inflation Reduction Act. And then we'll also be articulating a series of EWEB principles. What we mean by this is on certain topic areas, these are kind of guiding concepts or ideas that staff uses to create our programs or policies or advocate for change at the policy level. And by articulating those and bringing them before you to make sure that it's in alignment with commissioner values, we hope to have a set of North Star guiding reference points for the community to understand from a transparency standpoint on how we approach certain topics. The three topics that we're starting in terms of developing those principles are our GHG policy and how we advocate for that at the different policy levels. We'll be talking about our principles as it relates to distributed generation programs in our service area. And we'll also be talking about those principles as it relates to hydrogen. Then we'll move to Chapter 5, where we're talking about EWEB operations. And we'll be providing you the overview of our 2021 and 2022 GHG inventory results and talking about how we're moving forward towards those goals that were in SD-15. And we'll also be developing two appendices. The first one will be providing guidance on GHG emissions factors. There's a number of them that are available to use for different circumstances. And we'll be providing guidance on which emission sources exist, combining them all into one reference document. So members of the community don't need to go searching on other people's websites. They can go to one stop shop, get all the information they need, and find out how to use those emissions factors in different circumstances. And then finally, there'll also be an appendix, again, as I mentioned before, reporting out on the commitments that EWEB made as part of Eugene's Climate Action Plan 2.0. The executive summary in this first version will also, again, as I mentioned, provide that climate lens for our 2023 organizational goals. And the intent there is to build those cross-departmental links, because there's so much work being done throughout the organization that we want to really bring that climate lens and make those connections. The intent is that it will be modeled after the executive summary from the Washington State Energy Strategy, which is the picture that's on the screen here, that shows five areas of action and two to six tactical areas of focus in each of those five areas that will guide the work plan for 2023. So you'll be able to see those things as well. So with that, I'd love to just end with a couple of questions for you all. The first question is, how do you think you all as commissioners might be able to use the guidebook? The second question would be, what value do you think this provides for our community? And the third question would be helping us focus in on the prioritization. What content, as we seek to develop this over time, do you think would be most useful so that we can elevate that in the priority list? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner. Well, thank you for this exciting project to be working on. So to answer some of your questions, how would I use the guidebook? I think it would be a really helpful tool in trying to kind of see the EWEB's big picture with climate. I know that we focus on different things, but maybe all the pieces kind of fit together. And also, it would be just a great reference, like a one-stop shop as a reference book. I think that the value that it provides our community is there are a lot of people that have questions about our climate policies, where we're headed. And I think, again, it'd be like a nice reference document for that. I think what would be useful, in addition to what you've proposed, is also action items that customers can take as well. So like, this is what EWEB is doing to get to at least 95% carbon-free. This is where, as customers, this is something that you can do to help us get there. I think that those two things are important to do in parallel, because while we have the most, EWEB has the most impact, obviously, if we're looking at climate actions. I do think it's important to give people tools that they can participate to. So I think that that would be most useful, too. And then a question I have is, would this also be something that we would use to inform our decisions within EWEB? Like, do you envision, like, maybe some things will become apparent, like opportunities for us? Because you're kind of compiling all of this together, would it allow for us to take greater actions?
That's the intent. So I'm thrilled to hear that you're saying, you know, that that's where you think it could go. My goal is that it will help bring things more together, make more connections between disparate topics that some people might not initially at first blush see are connected, but actually do have connections with one another. And so, yes, that is the goal. I would hope that it would help clarify the approach that we're taking, making sure that that's in alignment with the direction you all want us to be going, and provide some of that guidance in the big picture. So that's incredible feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So you're gonna have to educate me on this a little bit. So what content would be most useful? So I get beat up by the business sector about the double standard perception about, you know, let's just say concrete, for example. EWEB's using thousands and thousands of yards of concrete building, water reservoirs. We're gonna use it building second source LTDs for MX because of the weight of the bus, electric buses. Airports use it for runways and things. But yet, we're asking the private sector not to reduce that. And what would, content would be most useful is an explanation of why there isn't an alternative. The technology isn't there. We cannot build, if we don't build steel reservoirs, if we don't build, you know, asphalt types of things. We're, you know, we're using the product, government's using the product that we're asking the private sector not to use. And that would be helpful, because getting a lot of people over that learning curve would be helpful, at least for me. Or, I mean, if this is a document that's gonna go just beyond us, that would be good, too. The other question I have is, are you gonna get into specific sources? I mean, because, you know, to me, if we, if Oregon can't have nuclear gas and we have an increased demand and reduced supply, how we're going to meet that and not using those? Because I think nuclear is carbon-free, but yet it's banned in state. And so at least that explanation, that that resource isn't there, and to get into that, because a lot of people have this presumption that we can somehow wind our way out of this. And I'm not so sure, to me, if that's gonna work.
Yes. So great points. I appreciate the feedback. There are a number of connections between the climate guidebook and other work that's happening at the utility. So your second point about the specific sources and the impacts there, you know, there's a lot of connections between our Integrated Resource Plating Project and the Climate Guidebook. And so there will be a chapter on our power supply and transmission. And the content, the specific content and how we navigate those connections between other existing documents are still being worked out. But that is the intent, that there would be a connection between a number of those other studies that are being done, information from a climate perspective on what are the implications of these different sources. Obviously, there's a connection between SD-15, which sets the goal that says we, on a planning basis, need to be sourcing resources that are 95% carbon-free. That's one of the parameters that they used in the modeling exercise for the IRP. So there is a connection between that work, and we will be working to figure out how to reference those connections in that chapter on power supply and transmission.
Thank you.
Your other question about concrete, if there are specific questions that you're getting from constituents and you would like talking points, or you would like an explanation on why we do certain things the way we do, that is very much the intent of, you know, some of the different sections that can be developed. So if there are specific questions that you get a lot and you would like to have something to refer back to, or that you'd like to have something in writing that you could direct someone to not only answer their question, but then say, "And you can also refer to this document." That is the intent here as well.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks for the presentation. And for you as a chance to weigh in on the front end, though I suspect may have a few of these components already written up and drafted. I personally, I can imagine looking at the policy section, like referencing that regularly. I have a hard time tracking all the different policies, state and federal, that provide the guardrails that we have to work within. And so I think having that at the ready will be extremely helpful. So thank you for incorporating that. Couple of things to expand on, I'm afraid we're all gonna heap our expectations onto this one and do all the things. But you asked us to do that. So one of the things you wanted to talk about was the guiding principles for distributed generation. And I assume by that, you're also addressing solar as a part of that directly. To me, that's by far and away where I get the most questions, is why isn't EWEB better on solar? And I think, you know, the kind of five-point description of why it's accessible for us, but also for customers, will be extremely helpful. And then you mentioned guiding principles on distributed generation and green hydrogen. I wonder if there are also guiding principles on conservation and demand response that are relevant here? That, I don't, I don't know if we have. I mean, I know we have guiding principles on conservation. I think, yeah, that certainly becomes relevant and actually the same for response. So I think including those would be valuable. I would love to see some portion on equity as it relates to climate change, both in terms of disproportionate impacts of climate and how might EWEB support people that are disproportionately impacted by heat waves, et cetera. But also, you know, as we queue up potential solutions, thinking about thinking about, I mean, what are the disproportionate impacts of those solutions, you know, increased rates, et cetera, that we have to think about and options there? So anything, I think, to highlight that as we're thinking about climate impacts, but also as our customers are referencing that document. And the last one, good point about concrete and cement mixes. I know, I'm certain that in our greenhouse gas inventories, we're paying attention to embodied energy as well. Is that right, in our construction services?
So in the baseline inventory that was done a number of years ago, the calculations for the embodied emissions and purchased goods and services were calculated. For the last few years, that has been left out. And, you know, our SD-15 does talk about the goals that, and very appropriately, so the goals are tied to our Scope 1 and 2 emissions, which are the direct emissions that we have the most control over and our purchased electricity. Those embodied emissions in the supply chain, the purchased goods and services, are things that we have an influence over, but we don't have direct control over. So they are usually not included in goals, such as what's included in SD-15, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be looking at them. And part of SD-15 also says that we should be taking that triple bottom line approach to any major construction projects, and in those instances, we definitely include that. So, for example, on the Lieberg TBL triple bottom line project, we did look at an analysis of the embodied emissions associated with all of the construction materials that went into each of the four alternatives. But if that's something you'd like to see brought back into that inventory on a regular basis?
Yeah, from my perspective, it would be valuable just because I think there are some options for us there, not because we necessarily want to weigh in there. I think Scope and 1 and 2 are the right places to focus, but on the point of concrete and cement, there are lower carbon alternatives that are available to us to purchase if we want to. Sometimes they're actually more durable than the higher carbon alternatives. So from my perspective, that'd be valuable for us to start bringing into the conversation. I don't, I don't know what level of detail seems appropriate, and I would defer to that or not, but there.
Thanks for the presentation. I guess how I would use the guidebook, I think, would be wanting to help form policies when things are brought to us that have an impact, that would be affected by this, that I would want to refer to it, as you said, as the encyclopedia. I hope that this doesn't turn into a book that goes on a shelf and just stays on a shelf. I've seen many studies and things like that that do that. So when you say it's a living document, I'm encouraged by that. For me, one of the important pieces to be able to synthesize in here for what content would be the most helpful would be the electrification study. There's, you know, a lot of talk in this community, oh, if everybody goes to electric cars and everybody goes to heat pumps, EWEB's not gonna be able to handle it, you know? So being able to have that electrification study summarized and simplified so that we can direct people and say, "Yes." And that kind of goes to CAP 2.0 and how this meshes with CAP 2.0 because a lot of the, a lot of the strategies in CAP 2.0 lean towards electrification. And so being able to say, "Yes, if this policy goes forward on CAP 2.0, EWEB is gonna be able to respond and we are gonna be able to respond carbon-free or 95% carbon-free." Having the answer, like Matt said, being able to have an articulatable answer for the solar question is real important because that comes up all the, how can you not do it solar? And we, and we see it in the IRP, we see how it just, it just doesn't pencil out, but being able to articulate that is gonna be an important thing going forward for me, I think. And lastly, started talking about concrete. I've been, there is a, there is a method, Carbon Cure, where they inject carbon into the concrete. There's a plant, there's several plants around, but there's not one in the city of Eugene. And if we could work with some of our major, if we can work with Wayne County, City of Eugene, and EWEB, and say, "This is gonna be one of our specs. We want this carbon, this concrete to be less carbon-generated." We're three of the biggest players in the concrete business in the town. Maybe that's something we can look at. There are, like I said, there are lower carbon processes. Thank you.
I really appreciate that feedback, you know, both Commissioner McCray and Commissioner Borowski, you know, bringing up these concepts of partnerships, whether it be related to how equity relates to our community and how it relates to climate change, or whether it's how can we develop processes, whether it's specs or other projects? That's, you know, an important part of my work as well, is to figure out where are there opportunities for enhanced partnership? How can we, as a community, reduce duplication of effort and enhance transparency and progress towards community goals? So that will be part of this as well.
I'm going to jump in now. I'm really excited about this, and I love that we are going to have a place where we can share content and really be intentional about what we're doing around climate change. One of the biggest questions that I get pushback, "Well, EWEB, you're still there, they're not at the forefront anymore." And it's like, no, we're doing all of these different things, but I think people don't see it as easily. I think having a fine source where people can look and, you know, to the extent possible, have the big picture messaging that we need around these key topics and points, but having the detail behind how we got to those decisions and how we, you know, how we see the plan moving forward. I mean, I think it's great that we have the different goals, but how are we going to achieve those goals? What are the steps to get there? Okay, if these are the steps that we're doing internally, how far are we along that path? Do we have any roadblocks? You know, here's how far we can get alone as an EWEB entity, but what are the things that we actually need to do to push the needle with our partners? So, and I love, you know, what Mindy said about, you know, what can, what can citizens do to get involved and work through it? And the, having the kind of frequently asked questions, the FAQs, I had also noted that solar is one of the biggest ones that I get pushback on. So in terms, you know, for me, I would use it for outreach, showing intention, policy setting, using it to see where we're at with KPIs. I think it would be very helpful for guidance and coordination, helping our partners understand where we're at so that they understand how they fit in that picture. I don't really feel like, I feel like we're very, we're in a very good position to be that kind of bigger coordinator around the topic, we have that knowledge and base in it. And so it'd be really interesting to see if this can lead to those collaborative partnerships with the other groups here that I think are interested, but maybe don't have the, you know, the skill and the knowledge base in the energy industry to move that forward. I mean, those are the biggest pieces for me, and I know that that is a lot to ask for, and you are one person. So do you have a group of people? I mean, obviously, staff feed into this work, but I'm just curious how you see this going and what resources you need to.
Great question. Great question. So one of the things that I am working very hard to do is to figure out how to embed this work in all of the rest of the work that we're doing, right? I am only one person. It needs to be much bigger than just one person. And it is. It absolutely already is. There's so many people throughout the utility that are already doing amazing work. And it's really about making those connections and addressing some of the components that you were talking about, identifying where the foundational pieces need to be laid and helping support the laying of those foundational pieces and letting people in the community know that, hey, before we can get to 15 steps down the road, we actually have to do this first, but this is our intention, that this piece that we're outlining in our 2023 organizational goals that we're working on this year is actually required before we can get to this other piece down the road. And if we lay that out and make that connection, then people understand, oh, hey, the EES is key to be able to get to these other customer programs that we might want to develop down the road. Or, hey, we actually have to define our diversity, equity, and inclusion program, or make some definitions on exactly what you were saying earlier. What does resiliency mean in all aspects of the utility? And if we define that and lay that as a foundation, then we can build on that and move forward, and we actually gain buy-in throughout the entire utility because now, back to that goal number two, the workforce and culture, we now better know how to bring these concepts into all of the work that we do, right? EWEB has so many incredible, smart, amazing staff that are already doing this work, but there are some nuances that are new, right? How do we bring resiliency into everything we do? How do we understand how diversity, equity, and inclusion relate? How do we bring a climate lens to these things? And that will take some foundational pieces in building and education, but everybody is, you know, on board and, but we also have to work in the areas of focus that we've already laid out for 2023 and not bring in 15 new projects that are outside of the scope of the six organizational goals that you already set our direction to. So that's part of the lens, and that's what I hope with the executive summary to do, is to say, here are the areas of focus within those six organizational goals. Here's where those tactical areas will be in 2023, and these are what we hope to accomplish by the time we come back in April of 2024.
I even got a question the last couple of days around, well, the utilities in the area should be coordinated together. Don't, why don't they do that? It's like, well, I mean, we get updates from Frank all the time about, okay, you know, I attended this meeting, we're looking at this resource, you know? Even some of that, how does EWEB interact with those other groups? Thank you. Okay, any other thoughts, comments? Okay, we were at my time, but we're before schedule, so go through the rest here.
One quick question or one quick comment. You mentioned that in the next month or two, you're gonna be meeting with stakeholders and advocacy groups and stuff like that. My concern is on the hydrogen. I want to make sure that, that we put out there that hydrogen is a step moving forward because right now, when you have hydrogen in the city of Eugene with some activist groups, it's tied to natural gas, and we know how contentious that is in this community. And for me, I see hydrogen as something that has great potential in the future. And so when you're meeting with these advocacy groups, if you can find out what their stance is on hydrogen and see where it's at, because I don't, I would hate to have us putting forward in Chapter 1 that hydrogen is one of our strategies that we would like to help pursue, and then all of a sudden, we've got a whole bunch of people standing up over here saying, "You're in bed with Northwest Natural because it's a gas and Northwest Natural is a gas." I'm just concerned about that. So if you can lay that groundwork, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thanks, President Carlson. I have got a couple of concerns about the path forward, and one of them is the creeping elegance of this, that this can become almost, it almost crushes for the work if it's not approached the way that Kelly has described, which is, how do we align and integrate this into the normal course of what we're doing? That's ultimately the intent. But what it also brings out, to your point, Commissioner, is that there are certain policy positions that need, that this board will need to reconcile with and deliberate on. You know, we've, we've been pretty clear, and I'll use your example around hydrogen. We've been pretty clear as to what our interests in hydrogen are. I'm not gonna speak, for example, for Northwest Natural. They may have a different interest, but as an electric utility, we have some really key interests from the electric sector of why hydrogen has interest to us. So we've been careful to walk that line, that as an electric utility, not specifically just EWEB for that matter, but as an electric utility, hydrogen can play a role in the future of energy, and this is why we're interested in it. So, but there's some other topics up there that we want to make sure that if we go, and I think one of the sections was policy principles, that we, all of us, management, staff, and the board are understanding of what those principles should be so that we're not, one going off this way, one going off that way, one going off that way. And that may take some work. That's not just saying, okay, here it is. We may have to have some discussions about that. The other thing that I think is really valuable about this work is that I think it answers some of the questions that come up, you know, will the real number please stand up? Because there's so many different complexities to what we're doing. You know, one of the appendices that she was talking about, which was basically, how do you account for carbon? You know, what's carbon intensity mean? You know, what number do you use? Do you use a regional number? Do you use EWEB's mix? When do you use what, right? So hopefully, a reference guide can provide other people with those kinds of resources. Oh, here's how EWEB, for this application, this is what we recommend. For this application, that's what we recommend. And that does take some, some back and forth dialogue. But I also know that we have a limited amount of time for this first revision so that we can't, it is a living, it has to be a living document. Part of that is that the requirements that you put forth in SD-15 require it to be a living document. That is a policy that doesn't end at the end of 2023. That's a policy moving forward. So it's gonna have to be a living document. It's part of that measurement process associated with how are we doing on SD-15. So there's a lot here. We're starting with a challenge we think we can take on between now and March, and then we'll continue to evolve it. And hopefully, we, I mean, we want to make it usable for this, for this group.
Some ground comment question? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd just say, thank you so much for all of your feedback. Be patient with us as we develop all the content that you suggested that you'd like to see. We'll start with, you know, where we're going, and then we'll build on it over time. Thank you so much.
Hey, we are at Correspondence and War Agendas. Right.
I'd like to thank Kelly for jumping into the deep end of the pool with us. It's been great. She's been a really great advisor. Seems like she's been here for years already. Probably seems like years to her as well. But I'll start with correspondence. We did one item of correspondence, and this was an updated, an update provided by our Chief Customer Officer, Business Line Manager, your Business Line Managers, on kind of where we are with some of our green options, the environmental product lines. Expect more in our year-end report on that, but does provide some pretty interesting numbers, especially, you know, our e-bike program, where not even through the end of the year, I think this was through November, 878 rebates provided to customers for e-bikes, which far exceeds any other city that we've compared notes with. And I know some commissioners in here have already taken advantage of that, but really great success there, test drive participants and other things. But this was just an update for the board, kind of a snapshot. Some of the dates were October, some of them November. Expect, one of the appendices in the year-end report will have an update on this through the end of the year, so you expect to get some more information on that, well, carbon offset credits, all kinds of things there. So that was the only piece of correspondence. things there. So that was the only piece of Correspondence. I don't know if commissioners had questions on that. I know that Julie is on the, on the line, but if there's no questions, we can. Great. The other one was Future Agendas. We do have a meeting scheduled for January 17th. That's an executive session. I believe that's virtual, is that not, Ann?
We hadn't set it up that way. I believe it's hybrid currently, but we could sure make it virtual.
If, if the commissioners are open to it, this is to talk about real estate opportunity. I'm fine with that. If commissioners are, are fine with that. I'll leave that up to you, President Carlson. We're, we're certainly able to do that virtually if you, if you would like to. And the other thing I would like to point out, on the very top of the Future Agendas, there's the link to the EWEB calendar. And if, if, that's almost something that I would recommend you put in your favorites links. It shows various community activities. For example, this, later this month, I'm presenting at the City Club on the 20th. It has all of these various neighborhood meetings and, you know, as well, that we're trying to, in many cases, schedule with you or with them. Some of, I mean, they have tenuous schedules to try to deal with. But that's, that's a really good opportunity to see the various pieces of planned outreach. And other than that, President Carlson, I'll just pass it back to you.
So on the calendar on Friday, there's a IRP presentation to Eugene Climate Collaborative. Can you say a little bit more of what that is?
The Climate Collaborative is the city of Eugene, they used to refer to it as the large lever stakeholders. If you're familiar with that group, that's, that's the same group. LA is facilitating that. She was, you remember before, for another organization. So this was to give them an update on, on the IRP. I do believe that at least a couple of, are you going?
Is it listed as a virtual meeting? So is it still virtual?
It is.
It's virtual. Any of you can attend that.
Do we need RSVP for that? I can't remember.
I don't know. It would be helpful if the board would RSVP so that we know if there's, you know, many of you attending, we have certain public meeting requirements that are required. So if you're planning to attend, it would be great to know.
And it's, it's just a good place to look out into the future. And if you see an event or have a question about something, just a great example, Schlossberg, we'd be happy to respond.
While we're on the topic of Correspondence, I am curious, in the past, we've had the ability to attend like the Chamber Meeting, the NAACP Annual Event. I mean, it used to be kind of in this timeframe. I don't know if it still is, but are those happening? You know, last year, we missed out entirely because we didn't have tickets in time.
Some, some of these, the answer is yes. Some, some of these were, over the last couple of years, very tenuous, just because of the environment we've been in. Our intent would be, many of those events, NAACP, for example, we'll pull the board as, as soon as we learn something about those. But, but yes, the, our, our intent is that all of these commissioners are welcome. And then if we find out sooner rather than later, we'll get information out.
I will move to Word drop-up. Anything to, to add?
Actually, so a couple of things. One is, I don't know where we're at with scheduling the board dinner. I don't know if that, you know, Matt, but are, if that's something that we're planning on doing. So I guess I would request that we start to plan for that sooner. It's hard, it's always hard to find a date. So just to remember that. And then the second thing is, I just really want to thank you, John, for your, your leadership. You did, you're a fantastic president and I truly appreciate your partnership. So, thank you.
About four or five months ago, Frank, I brought to you from the Springfield Mayor. Sean was really worried about the shift in the Lower McKenzie. And I looked at it today and that thing is moving. And it's moving right towards our water intake. If you look at that North, North Channel is three times wider now than it was a year ago. And that Lower River does whatever it wants. Are we concerned about that? And I know it's, it looks like, and we brought it up, and I don't know if you got back to Sean about that, but he was concerned about it taking out all that Willamleyne property. And it's, it's kind of a will of its own. And it looks like it's moving in the wrong direction.
We'll follow up.
Colon, 40 seconds.
We'll follow up on that, Commissioner.
Because I know that Springfield Mayor mentioned to me and I mentioned to you about that. And he wanted to know what we were going to do.
He was concerned with the dike.
Yeah, he was, he was concerned about down by the Rainbow's water wells and just below your, you know, the sewer and all that. But if you look at that North Channel, it's really, it's kicking pretty good. Just wondering if we're, we're concerned about it? Or if we're going to respond to Sean.
I know we, I know we did respond a while ago around opportunities to get people connected. But I'll have to follow up.
I'm just, I'm just following up because I know that, you know, it's good to, to sure let him know that we're, we haven't just forgotten about him, or he just made a phone call. At least respond to him. Thank you.
On the point about the board dinner, I think our evaluation and board effective is due next Monday. So I just want to put that out there. Because I think that's part of what we do at the dinners. We actually review, you know, how we're doing this group.
Yeah, I was just going to propose if we all have calendars, maybe we just stay here at the end and find a date that works.
All right. Well, we have something else. People, adjourn.